Okay, so some side-by-side comparisons and analysis. Looking at the left side of the spectrum and then the right side of the spectrum in the context of resource distribution. One key question and topic of conversation that we had during our last round of engagement was the types and proximity to resources that they would want to see across the district during the engagement. So on the left, you're, and we got a variety of responses and some really good ideas and understanding of how people access and want to access those resources. So in terms of what you're seeing in scenario A, so closer to the school-by-school approach, you're seeing that every school would have, you know, the resources they need in terms of, for example, a gym, an art room, a theater. And then what you're seeing on the right in kind of this overall scenario Z or community campus approach is if we pooled resources together, how might we create economies of scale and provide enhanced resources accessible to all students while remaining mindful of necessary funds? So while it would be great to imagine a sports complex with, you know, an Olympic pool, indoor-outdoor tracks, indoor-and-outdoor courts, training and rehabilitation room, et cetera, at each high school, for example, funding for that might be challenging. So how can we create opportunities for all students to access this amazing, rich sports complex, but build one of them instead of building three of them? And that would be scaled at, in different ways, right? So for K8 facilities, you can imagine it might not be a sports complex with an Olympic pool, but there could be other resources that are enhanced and you'd be able to get your, find some savings that way. So that's the idea in terms of resource distribution when we're looking at one scenario against the other. The rest of these comparisons, we're highlighting really what happens at each grade band and why, and we've organized them into themes as a method to analyze one against the other. And these themes were those themes that rose up as the highest level of importance during our engagement. So I don't want to read everything on the screen, but I'll try to highlight some of the differences between each scenario. So our first theme is social development and relationships. So we've already talked on a lot of these, but, you know, maintaining the small-scale neighborhood elementary school has more parent involvement, separates young adolescent and teenage students, reducing possible intimidation factors, can provide that for a start for middle schoolers, and it's just that's, and then a smaller high school environment as well. So not too dissimilar from early elementary to high school in that approach. Hybrid, the change there is really for those larger high school, the larger high school campus approach, larger high school population near each other can create more diversity and more social groups. So that is an exciting opportunity. And then there is the ability in high school to have small nested communities. So answering that question of how do you make a big school feel small? Then for the community campuses, you're having students that attend a K8 for a longer period of time, so it can establish stronger relationships and increase ownerships in the school, the siblings at the same school for longer, students are known by more adults. So some of the things we've already been talking about are highlighted here. So in terms of collaboration and partnerships, we haven't talked that much about this, but that was a priority that was raised by the community in terms of moving forward and opportunities. So school-by-school maintains the status quo, opportunities for community partnerships. Hybrid, there can be a wider range of opportunities and resources for high school. Again, more interaction and collaboration, there's that centralized idea of community resources, and then a centralized high school can become kind of a partnership home base. And so as the district is able to engage with partners, the partners have one space that they can come to and the opportunity to impact more students. So community campuses is not too dissimilar, but it extends that to the early learners. So opportunities in terms of partnerships, creating these partnership home bases, not only at the high school level, but at the K8 level as well. In terms of identity and legacy, another key theme, we're maintaining the current elementary and middle schools for the school-by-school approach, and then similarly for the high schools. And then Fordson would remain a high school in this scenario. Hybrid, maintain current neighborhood elementary schools still, and then we're still able to maintain identity and legacy of three separate high schools on one campus, if that's something that's important to the community. And here Fordson becomes a K8. And then community campuses, we're creating those new K8 campuses, and then again, the same approach for high school. So daily operations and phasing. School-by-school, this has been brought up, but greater access to car-free families, maintaining status quo facilities. And then hybrid, greater access to car-free families still, and allowing flexibility for long-term planning that we talked about. So in terms of planning for the approach, how can we build in that flexibility to change course? And then community campuses, potentially simplified maintenance for K8s and high schools across the board, creating opportunities to lease and repurpose unused properties. That can be opportunity and a challenge like we discussed, and then again, allowing for phasing and project efficiency. So there are a lot of outstanding questions, and we know that. So we captured just a few on the slide with the understanding, again, that more will come up, and this is just the beginning of the discussion in terms of scenarios with the community. Thank you. So school-by-school, some of the swing spaces are small, and we would need to build additional capacity on them to appropriately be adequate for full school populations. There would most likely be minor boundary change implications, and then transportation is a question for all of the scenarios. Hybrid, finding an appropriate site for a high school campus, we've also touched on that. Boundary change implications, and then again, the transportation. Community campuses, finding an appropriate site for high school, still an outstanding question. The public perception around losing neighborhood and elementary schools, we understand that's a real thing, it's a culture shift. Unused properties could become an operations and maintenance burden if they're not sold or leased. And then boundary change implications and transportation. So what does this mean in terms of prioritization? This is a slide that you've seen before, and we discussed this at the front end of our time together tonight. So we've looked at schools and the dashboard has given us prioritization based on the needs and all of the data that we collected. And so we have divided those into high priority, moderate priority, and low priority schools. And so you can phase that over however long you want to really, but it would, it would make sense to do something, you know, first 10 years, 10 to 20 years, 20 to 30 years, or however that suggests as we get into more details and further phases of the work in terms of funding. But what does that look like in terms of space? Where are the needs located across the district? So the high priority schools, you see here that they're pretty evenly distributed across the district. So this takes into consideration elementary, K8, and middle schools from west to east. So similarly, for the moderate priority, also pretty evenly distributed across the And then for low priority, again, they're pretty evenly distributed across the district. So this works out well in terms of accessing swing space that would be located again across the district, and then making sure that we're addressing and building new, offering something new to the community at large. And so in terms of those parameters that we discussed a bit ago and how we might compare one scenario against the other, affordability. So we'll get into the cost level assumptions in a couple of slides, but you'll see here in terms of affordability, we have $1.3 billion when we ran the cost model for the school-by-school, $1.7 billion for the hybrid scenario, and $1.6 billion for the community campuses. I will say that this takes into consideration for the campus approach, keeping all of the buildings, so it doesn't account for any sale or lease income that would occur. The opportunities for educational innovation, you see climbing as we move from left to right. Again, that vision of learning and alignment would happen at every school, but this is looking from a district-wide perspective. Equity, there's different ways that we can look at equity, and we can talk about some of those in a moment, but those we've matched up even. And then rate of change, so time, how long could we get this complete? 27, 26, and 22 years respectively. And then sustainability, we've also marked those as equal. So some of the details behind this, you can see affordability, educational innovation, so the idea of alignment with individual facilities, all the way to opportunities to embed those enhanced resources at high school or at all grade levels. Equity, when in the school-by-school approach, they're widely distributed basic resources. Neighborhood schools are more walkable and accessible for all. More accessible elementary schools and middle schools in the hybrid approach, then community campuses enhance resources balanced throughout the district, and then providing that ease of access for potential community partnerships. Rate of change, I think we've talked a lot about. So I'll jump to sustainability. So new buildings can equate to energy efficiency, renovations can equate to less waste, there's lots of opportunity there and lots of ways that we can dig into sustainability as the project moves forward. So in terms of cost and the methodology for cost, we started to touch on it a little bit earlier, but again, we established a set of working assumptions. So we have a dollar per square footage amount that has been assigned to each grade band, and then we also have capacity calculations that are calculated at a square foot per student level, and that's really based on best practices and is represented in the educational specification. And so by using those two numbers, we ran, we ran the cost model, looking at renovation, looking at easy, challenging, and difficult to renovate from an elementary, middle, and high school perspective. So to your earlier point, if a school has been renovated more recently, in terms of the adaptability assessment, which is one of the data factors in the dashboard, it would be easier to renovate, the structure isn't as restrictive, et cetera, so we're calculating that at a less cost, in terms of a dollar per square footage amount. Then we have an additional 20% historic premium on buildings that would require that. We have that minimal upgrade and update for existing buildings for swing space, and then we have a blanket demolition cost.
One thing to point out, these are in today's dollars, just for So yeah, once you do project out, you know, there's
30 years, you're not going to be able to.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I mean, so this is for comparison now, is what we're looking at, between the different scenarios, so you can see what is more costly and that. So yeah, just want to point that out.
Am I just missing it? What would be the cost per square foot for new building, building new?
So new is the first column that you see on the left, so elementary would be 410.
Oh, I see it, I did, okay.
Yep. I'll also say that we are seeing those numbers rising as well in real time. Inflation is real, as we all know and feel, so I'll call that out.
So I'm sorry, again, with the cost, those other numbers you shared, 1.3, 1.7, 1.6, that's today's dollars.
Correct.
Even though some of these projects wouldn't be done for 10 to 20 years.
Correct. And so the next phase of work, after a scenario is selected by the community and you all, we would be able to incorporate a more detailed cost estimate, working together to build an escalation.
I just want to make sure I understand this then. So if we went out for a bond today, and we said, well, we'd like scenario A, B, or C, 1.3, 1.6, would we be bonding for that, knowing that that's not going to be the cost 30 years from now, when we would have to still be doing the projects that we bonded for? And what do we do when we run out of the money?
Well, most likely, you probably would split this up into multiple different bonds. And so that's why it's really complicated, you know, you would have to figure it out how you're going to do it.
And what if one year people were willing to vote for it, and then you go out five, 10 years from now, you got halfway through your plan, and the next group says, forget it?
That's a possibility. I mean, the other option could be is you try to go for all of it, but you would, we would then have to factor in all of the escalation costs and
Yeah, well, that's why I'm asking
Yeah, and so to that point, like, if you did go for everything right now, I mean, those numbers would be much higher.
They would be much higher, yeah.
An additional kind of just item to point out is, again, we would expect that you would reevaluate this at a certain cadence in terms of the plan. 30 years is a really long time. And so we're, the next phase of work, we'll go into how, and how do we pay for this? What do we pay, what are we paying exactly? So we're not there yet, to be really transparent, that's kind of out of this scope of what we're talking about tonight. But that idea that, you know, you would, you would approach this with a certain amount of projects and a certain amount of funding that would have impact, and then reevaluate it after a certain amount of years makes a lot of sense, which is, you know, why we're hoping, or why we've planned to give you the tools to be able to make those decisions in the future, knowing that 30 years is a really long time.
And the people who are voting today are probably not going to be the people who are voting 10, 15 years from now, nor will they realize the benefits, a lot of them, of what their tax dollars are paying for today necessarily, because their kids are going to be long gone.
Yeah, that's a good point. Again, when we first came here, we talked about this as really, you got to look at it as a roadmap going forward. You know, it's really not about picking a one option that's just going to
So
Solve every problem, it's really a roadmap, and, but approaching it through this holistic lens, though, is really the right approach, because otherwise, if you were just to continue on piecemeal, you know, this building is about ready to fall down, and or we need some work, you're just going to continue, it's just a, you know, kind of fix it as it's needed type of approach. And so really what you have here is a roadmap, and as Jesse was saying, that with any type of master plan, you will need to reevaluate as you go. And in 10 years, your population may change here. You may have less students, and you may not have to, you know, carry out some of the future things. So really, you know, this shows the big picture, shows different ways you can approach it, and then there's a tool you have for prioritization, so you know what buildings really do need the attention first. And so as you're deciding on going out with a bond, you would probably prioritize the ones that are most in need first within this overall context.
I see we've only got a couple more slides, and then I assume Mr. Wall's going to be getting into some more of the numbers with us, is that correct?
If that's where the board wants to go, yes.
All right, if you want to finish these last couple of slides, then.
Sure. So the last couple of slides really touch on the recommendation for community engagement moving forward. So where we ended the last time we were together, again, was that we would bring forth a series of scenarios tonight, and then from there, we would move on and to engage the community. So phase one, what you see highlighted in green, the objective there is focus, is the focus is on narrowing the three scenarios that we've shared to one master plan that the community can unite behind. And so you see items listed under scope, which is part of that recommendation. So it's including a dedicated community organizer, an assessment and audit of prior engagement strategies to understand what that is and what those were, targeted focus group and community meetings. And then we would refine and update the final scenario per the findings and issue a final report. And we are suggesting that that takes at least six months of engagement, that this is, you know, some real time associated, that we don't rush this, that we really ensure we have maximum participation and maximum voice to understand what the community has to say and what their feelings are about all of this. So this is part of a larger strategy or approach that does include the second phase. And so the objective of that would be another round of engagement to further raise awareness. It would be a coalition-building effort, and we would conduct a public opinion poll and organize an educational informational effort as for the potential ballot proposal. So that would be in the future, and that would be another six months, we would anticipate. And the scope of that, again, would include a dedicated community organizer, that assessment or audit of prior engagement strategies, a series of focus groups, and community meetings, a poll, ultimately a bond recommendation strategy that would be folded into a final report.
One question I've got is, why would the public opinion poll be in the second phase and not the first?
Great question. So we did, we did share or put out an opinion poll on, on the vision of learning and some community resources, so as part of the scope of work. And we could have that as part of phase one. However, we feel like to really understand and get the full context of what all of this is, that additional discussion needs to happen. So it might be difficult to get more, more feedback on the specific scenarios through a poll than it would for that kind of next phase. Once a scenario is selected and there are more details, it can be easier to distribute a poll with very targeted, specific questions, and people have a greater and deeper understanding of what they're really being asked.
All right, additional questions before we go into Mr. Wall? Trustee Barry?
Yes, thank you. Earlier, James, you mentioned you can continue doing piece by piece. I would love to see what that would cost in the next 25 years. I can imagine what it would cost. That's exactly what we've been doing for the last five decades. Perfect example of that is Henry Ford Elementary School. All the different projects we've invested there every four, five years, and now it's like, you're telling us that building needs to be lifted, you know, and rebuilt. Not a question, but I guess it is a question. How difficult would it be to come up with that number? Just like status quo, just keep asking for a few hundred million dollars here, because if we go back a few years, what I heard the community say, this is what they want. And I don't know, we're going to hear soon, I don't know if we're going to be able to do what they want, but at least now we have something to say, this is what you wanted us to do with the $450 million. You know, it's, at least we can, we have something, a starting point, that we can have those discussions that weren't really, they were very ugly discussions that we had with our community members, and so, I don't know. Just perfect examples, Henry Ford, all those millions of dollars we invested in, where are we at now? Do we just keep continuing down that road? That's not a decision, that's not going to be our decision, that's why the next phase is to go out to the community and say, hey, look, it is what it is, that's all, I don't have a question.
Anything else before we turn it over to All right, Tom?
Well, I appreciate the time you've taken today to listen to Phil. You know, some of the administrative team had been working with him, you know, quite closely since August, so we have a better understanding in how it flowed and how it got to here. You're hearing more of the local level. And this whole concept of grouping schools, K8s, and the high school campus is, is different. That's not what you normally see in a district, but that's what's been coming out of the data. Now, it's no easy decision on your part to know where we go from here. What we do need is a vision and a direction, because right now, as Mr. Barry alluded to, we just keep going as we go, it's very inefficient. We're putting money in and then making a decision a year later to do something else with the school, that's very inefficient and very time-heavy. Every time we mobilize to do anything, there's always that mobilization cost we're paying every single time. So that's why a lot of districts do bond issues, because they're grouping a whole bunch of projects together to get an economy of scale to make it more efficient and less costly. If a manager knows it's going to go into four schools and do these specific projects, they can give you a much better price than for, you know, first month you ask them to do this project, they're going to have the mobilization cost, the overhead cost. Two months later, you have to do the same project at another school, you're losing money that way. So that's why a lot of districts do bond issues, to group them, to get them done more efficiently and a quicker time scale, so it's less disruptive to the educational process. Some have gone down the, you know, the sinking fund, pay-as-you-go type approach, and that's something where they can get a larger dollar value, but it's still, year after year, you're deciding which projects to do. So when we look at funding sources, you have the bond process, which you have different types of bonds. You can have a voter-approved bond, is what we've done for the major renovations, but that's capped to 15% of your state equalized value. Now, your taxable value, your state equalized value, which is a little larger. You can't bond more than that. That's a state law, so districts don't overburden themselves with debt and have trouble paying it back, or the taxpayers are getting undue burden on the large site. There is the non-voter-approved bond. We've done that in the past, where we actually, that's capped at 5% of the SAB, when we renovated some of the football fields back in 2005, '07, when we first put in the, you know, the artificial turf field. So we've done that on occasion. And there's energy voter, energy bonds, which aren't voted, that's what we just recently approved, where there's no limit, but it's capped on what you can actually replace for the energy savings, to make sure you have the money back to pay for those improvements. So we've done all three of these over time, and it made sense. So I just want to give you this, so we're kind of capped on what we can do. I know I'm speaking fast, so I'm sorry, but you're recording it, so we're probably good. So back in February, March, when I started understanding where some of this was going, I reached out to our financial planner and saying, all right, just give me an idea on a dollar figure of what it would mean to our public. Because until we have a set direction, because of bonds, when you go out for a bond, there's a useful life for those improvements. If you're building a new building, it's 30 years, but if you're, you know, buying a bus with it, it's only six years. So you have to make sure the investors know that what you're borrowing can get paid back reasonably in that amount of time for the projects you have. So these are a lot of estimates at this point. Right now, our debt mill was at 4.82 back in 2019. We were looking at that time to just renew that same debt mill and continue forward, that was roughly about $240 million. Now our debt mill has dropped to 3.5 for the last couple of years. Now it's dropping down to 1.3 roughly next year. So anything we do is going to be an increase in millage rates. So the renewal versus new, the renew is kind of gone now. We really don't have that opportunity to do anything with that 3.5, because it has to drop down to 1.3 or less, depending on our capital, our taxable value. So I asked them, I, it's very hard to get the public to understand the debt mills, because it's based on your taxable values and what your debt payments are. So we really need a smoothing approach, so when we look at the debt millage, it's constant. It's not going to go up to seven mills one year, down to two mills next year, it gets very confusing, and it's hard for people to plan and understand that value. So I asked our financial planners, just look at our tax base, assume like a 2% increase over the next 30 years, that kind of scenario, what would that raise in our, in funding? And I'm saying, we're going to be around 1.2, 1.3 million or billion, just looking at the models of the data of what needs to be replaced, what has to be renovated over a 30-year span. So they came back and gave me some projections to kind of average it out, and depending on the bonds, our 30-year bonds versus 20-year bonds, a lot of the details there, but you look anywhere from 6.8 to about six mills on an average over 30 years to raise 1.3 billion dollars. Now, you can't do it quicker or slower because of that limit on how much we can bond, that kind of gives you an idea of what that would mean. So if you round it to seven, just as an example, to make it, you don't get into the specific numbers, because it's kind of still out there in the estimates, but seven-mill increase, so you're looking at roughly, you know, a six-mill increase to the average taxpayer, because eventually that 1.3 is going to go down to one and so forth over the next 10 years. So you're looking at a six-mill increase. So this gets more complicated, because on the operational side, we have two millages. We have 18 mills, non-homestead property, so it's levied on other property besides your household, and we have the whole harmless millage, which was at 6.17, is now anywhere between three and four, depending on how the taxable values come out this year. So the taxpayers are seeing a reduction from that, just because of the law changes in our taxable values. Those expire June 30th of '24. So we know that by June 30th of '24, that if we don't renew that, that the district can't levy that operational millage in the '24, '25 school year. That's roughly about $42, $43 million. That's a big hit, and that comes out of our pocket. You know, we'd be, we can't run the same program that we're running today, there would have to be adjustments. If we do that prior to June 30th, '24, it's a renewal, after June 30th, '24, it's an increase, because it actually expired. We had that presentation at our last board meeting. We had that presentation at our last board meeting. So it complicates things. So people have to understand that this is something we do, operational is different than our infrastructure side. Now, if we actually get a long-term bond program in place and the board makes that commitment, that will be, have to make a decision after we do our operational millage. You know, depending on how we structure this, you can go short-term and look at it, you know, on a five-year basis, just like any strategic plan, you can't really plan that far out, but you gotta have a vision of where you're headed. So I, I wholeheartedly agree that you have to have some kind of benchmarks in there to review this process as we go along. But you also have to have the vision where you're making a commitment to the community of where you're gonna go, because not everything can happen at once. People have to understand this is gonna be a Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, Phase Four. So you really have to make sure the public understands you're making that commitment long-term. Though you might tweak it, but you gotta have some kind of long commitment, because why would they buy, you know, invest in the schools when their kids might not even see the impact down the line? Could be grandkids for some of us, but it comes back around again. So those are a lot of considerations to do. Those, that seven mill increase or the six mill increase to a total of seven for debt, that's looking at roughly about a hundred million dollar activity every three to four years underneath that scenario. So we would have to look at that 100 million and look at the phases and how we could book it out. And that would go all the way out to 2054. So it's a long ways away to get through that program, to raise that 1.3 billion capital for instruct, infrastructure over that time span. That's a lot of data for you too, in a short period.
And Tom, with the hold harmless, we have the hold harmless and then you have the non-homestead.
Right, so if we actually had a commitment long-term for infrastructure, we are now currently putting aside anywhere from four to six million dollars annually. And if the hold harmless is gonna raise six to seven million dollars annually, you theoretically as a board, even though you have an approved levy, you can actually decide not to levy it, so that seven mills could actually go down to three mills for the increase in taxes. So the board has that flexibility. Now, you know, if the board doesn't make that long-term commitment, or that commitment doesn't pass, operation, you still need to approve that on the front end to make sure it's there for operational purposes. But you can actually start, when you have a long-term plan, you can start budgeting goals to make sure you can meet that obligation. For example, a lot of the infrastructure, busing, you know, curriculum, all those things you can plan for, as long as you know you have a plan going forward and what the expectations are. So there's a lot of options out there. Again, they're just talking the big picture and the vision, and that's what the board has to have, so we know as administration what direction we're trying to head and what we're trying to, to meet and, and do for our public.
Trustee Pelichkov?
Can I also assume, now that you mentioned it and we didn't really, we just kind of glanced by it, transportation?
Correct.
Because most of these scenarios would drastically increase our need for busing. Centralized campuses of any kind are not walk-to schools. Is any of this, uh, these dollar figures incorporating the, that need?
Well, obviously, our general fund, operational millage can be used for anything. It's broadband. The bond, you can bond for busing, technology, security. And just recently, the state has approved for a sinking fund. And I, I didn't really go over that too much, but a sinking fund is another millage levy we can do that a lot of districts do, command anywhere up to three mills for up to a maximum of 10 years. And one mill will raise roughly about 3.4 million dollars for us. The state just approved that you can actually buy buses through the sinking fund, starting, I think, like an August date going forward, any election after that.
I mean, we wouldn't need it anytime in the very near future, but we would be prepared.
But a sinking fund, you levy that money each year and you pay as you go. You, you don't have the capability of bonding those large numbers. Now, a sinking fund won't solve our problem, because it's not large enough, but it's a stopgap measure possibly. So depending what the board wants to do and the timeframes, you could go out there for a sinking fund to help fund some of these projects on a smaller scale. So it's again, once we have the vision, we can start fit, fitting the jigsaw puzzles into it. And the public really has to understand the vision and, and approve the vision. Otherwise, if they're not in, you know, together, it doesn't go anywhere, because there's too much, you know, deciding of what's more important than others. So that's where we're at right now. I think everybody agrees, we need infrastructure and changes, but I don't know if everyone agrees on what it is. So we've been kind of in this, you know, program, that's why we brought Fielding in, to kind of bring that vision together, so we're all on the same page of what we really need to do for our vision, for our buildings going forward.
Trustee McDonald?
I just wanted to make a point. Everyone around this table absolutely advocates and believes in the public education. And I just wanted to make the point that we've talked about, uh, the money spent now won't necessarily help the kids, my kids, in 30 years. But as a community, we always have to keep in mind the big picture, and that is our entire community benefits when we educate all of our children. But not everybody, not everybody's into that.
Right, but that's true, because these children need an education to fulfill their dreams, which helps the community with wherever their life goes, whether they become a doctor, a grocery store, whatever the case may be, entrepreneur. So, um, just keep in mind that although the money that we pay now doesn't necessarily benefit our students, or it could benefit our grandchildren, the money that we pay towards our children, our community's children, benefits all of us. I just wanted to make that point.
Trustee Barry?
I want to say thank you. I know you had a little defensive earlier with some of the questions, but the vision you put forward is just so exciting. Now it's up to us to go out there and see if we can sell it. We might not be able to, I mean, knowing they're going in, but me personally, I'm so excited. And to, you know, the question is that, why should I care 20 years from now, my, my, you know, my children aren't gonna be in the schools? I think, uh, most of our senior citizens do understand property value, the connection to the schools. I can sell a house right now in a certain area for $700,000, the same house just a few miles away, just per perception, the education that the kid's gonna get might go for $300,000 or $400,000. If we decide to do nothing, we let our buildings just start deteriorating and we can't find the money to fix or stuff like that, uh, look around people. There are districts that happened to, you know, these, these cities that we read about the, in the history books, where they were because of a plant or the property value or what have you, and now where they're at now. I don't want to mention any cities, obviously. Me personally, I'm excited. We can have those discussions with our community, but, uh, moving forward, it's just, it's gonna be up to us right now to see. If people see it, hey. If they don't, then there's nothing we can do.
Now, in term of time, what I see as the most pressing issue is the, uh, renewal of the hold harmless.
Correct.
And, and we're saying that this, we're probably looking at at least a year through these two phases, correct?
Correct. And we're not even focused on Phase Two yet, or really on just Phase One, because we don't know where the public is. Because again, as you guys had a lot of questions, they're gonna have a lot of questions, even from a layperson's standpoint of not dealing with K-12 for, you know, all that we do here. So it's gonna take a longer learning curve. So that first phase is really what we need to focus on, and Phase Two will happen if we can get everybody on the same page.
So for right now, we're really saying that next spring, I think you mentioned it, the last board, board meeting is when we would have to be going out for the hold harmless.
Right, so there's certain dates you can go out for, and if we actually go out on our own, that's anywhere from 140 to 200,000 dollars in cost to run the election by the city, and City of Dearborn and City of Dearborn Heights. So the next scheduled election that we're aware of, unless they have a different something sooner, is the primary in February. It's the first time that we could actually piggyback on an election and not cost the district that, that amount of money.
So that would be February of '24 for the hold harmless?
Correct.
24th?
No, February of 2024.
Oh.
The hold harmless and operational.
Yeah, hold harmless and operational. If we're saying at least 12 months, we're really then saying the earliest we would even want to consider this going forward would be, call it the general election of 2024?
Correct.
But we've got other items that this board is, is a part of with the college that also have to come forward next year. So we might be looking more at like a 2025 election before we could really bring this to voters.
So that really gets us down to a short-term plan and a long-term plan. And that's where we really need the board direction of how you wanted to handle it, you know, because we have ideas as administration, but again, the board's the one that has the vision, that we have to kind of make sure you feel comfortable of where you want to go, short-term and long-term.
Now, three different scenarios were presented to us tonight. Going forward, before we would start Phase One, uh, is there a, a expectation that we would possibly narrow, narrow down three to two, or take all three to the community, see what they say before we would go more, uh, more input from the board? What's preferred?
I mean, I think we could do either, to the pleasure of the board. If, if you feel like all three of these, you want us to go with the community, we'll do that. If you feel like one, for whatever reason, um, we can narrow it to two as well. We can do it either way, right? I mean?
Right, and the same thing we did in 2019, we had different scenarios and we came up with a fourth one from community input. So really, you know, it's really the vision of what the community wants to tell us. Now, we've done a lot of surveying and focus groups and town halls, but again, they didn't see the scenario aspect, so that's gonna be new to them.
When you go to the community too, we might be tweaking the plans after you get the feedback, right? I mean, that's what, you know, and they might say, one of them is just absolutely not.
Yeah, and the, the idea of doing, looking at it more as a spectrum does allow us to kind of, you know, we can shift one way. It's not like we're just generating a whole new plan. It's, it may be that, you know, let's say we stick with a high school approach, which is just keeping the high schools where they're currently at. That could work with the scenario that we showed, um, all the way on the right-hand side, which, you know, you could have K eights and still have high, separate high schools. So we can shift.
So there's combinations you can do with all the?
Yeah, so those.
So that's what might come out of those forums?
Exactly, right, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
For, for me personally, talking about it too much tonight, I, I am fearful we'll be reactionary and emotional, because we're talking about buildings that have been around for a long, long time. And many of us have, have very close ties to these buildings. So I really want to be able to absorb this information, have us continue the conversations over the course of the summer, uh, on, on how we'd like to proceed. How would the board feel about something like that? That's agreeable?
So maybe into one of the June meetings or the July?
Uh, June 19, well, June 19 is gonna be a budget that we'll have to adopt?
Correct. We have to have the public hearing on the 5th.
Okay.
And then the subsequent board meeting after that, the actual approval.
And then we would have the July meeting, which is?
July, we usually have a light schedule, so if you felt like you needed more time, I mean, I don't know how fast we need to do this, but, um, it's usually light, usually the June ones, we do get a lot of items, right? So if you didn't, if you wanted to have more time, I would suggest the July meeting. But if we, if there's, is there any reason why we couldn't wait till July to make the decisions?
I, I mean, from my viewpoint in the communications process of it all, I mean, you're really not going to start engaging the community until September anyway, um, because parents, you're not gonna be engaging the community in June, July, or even in August. Um, so we may want to start our planning process in early August and get, you know, dates and get, uh, our planning together for how we're going to initiate this, this, um, Phase One of this communication process. But we really, excuse me, we really wouldn't start that process until September, because that's when our parents are back and that's when our, you know, people, our, our staff is back, and that's where all of our stakeholders are really back and ready to engage in this. You know, this is, is very, you know, I mean, obviously, as it's been mentioned, you know, all of you had some very good questions, um, and I think that the whole point was to get everybody thinking, this is exactly what's going to happen in the community. The community is gonna have some excellent questions for us. They're gonna have some excellent thoughts. There are some immediate needs in our district that is on the forefront of every community member's mind right now. And they're gonna want to know right now, how are we going to address the most immediate needs? And as Tom pointed out, this is a phased in, it may be a phased-in approach to addressing the needs of the district. And that's gonna have to be part of the conversation. Um, I think we got really fixated on Fairlane, and I think we shouldn't. I think we need to get fixated on a central campus approach. And, you know, yes, land is at a premium, um, but all of this approach is requiring us to be creative in our thinking. And we may have to think outside of just Fairlane, uh, uh, and think of other, are there other plots of land in the central part of the city? But it's not so much right now, it's not so much about the land as it is about the concept. We didn't even get into the whole educational aspect and the instructional aspect. That's why we've had the instructional team has been part of all of this conversation. This is a total shift. If you're going to create schools that have these open learning spaces where kids are engaged part-time in a classroom, and then they go out in small groups, and then they go back in the school, and then they, they collaborate with another grade level, this is an instructional mind shift, that all of our instructional people are gonna have to be brought in on this whole conversation as well. Changing to a whole K eight structure is gonna impact transportation that was brought up. It's gonna impact boundaries. Our community needs to be aware that if we're thinking of these things, think about the fact that boundaries are gonna change. Transportation is gonna change. There's going to be lots of parts of this and lots of change. And if, if, you know, for my Star Trek friends, if space is the final frontier, change is the most common fear. And that's where, and that's what people are, you know, are afraid of change. But this is exciting. This is exciting. Our district has not faced this type of dramatic, just thematic, thematic change since 1944, when the Fortson School District merged with the Dearborn School District and created the district that we have right now. That's what all of you are deciding. It's huge. It is huge. But it is also so exciting to know that all of you are going to be part of a process that is gonna fundamentally change the way this district operates for the next 100 years. We're in 100-year-old buildings. That's what's gonna be happening in this district, and we're all part of that. And if we settle in to our common ways of thinking and we settle in and be parochial, because let's face it, schools are parochial. It's about what's at my school for my kid right now. I don't care what's happening across town to your kid. I want to know what's happening to my kid right now at this school. And I understand that. It's our children, it's our kids. But we gotta think beyond that. Our whole community has got to think beyond that. And it's gonna be up to us to help our community get that thought process going. And that's what Fielding has done for us. They have opened that door to put that roadmap out there to get us thinking that way. And it's exciting. It's really, really exciting, but it's gonna be really, really hard. And it's gonna take a lot of effort on all of us working together to make sure that this happens, because it needs to happen. Our district needs this fundamental change to happen.
Wow.
I was just gonna say, who, who's gonna want to follow him?
Well, I, just to brief, but Da- David, you've been in the district a long time, I've been in the district a long time. I would say, we, you know, we have lots of different challenges. We have great things that we do and we have areas that we need to improve. I, I see the infrastructure as the biggest thing facing this district right now. And I've been in the district almost 28 years. So we do need to do something and, uh, so I would suggest, um, the July meeting, because it'll give you more time, and we can just put this as a discussion item and we can spend more time, because the June meetings are gonna be difficult with things that come and awards and all sorts of things. So you guys will have enough time, because usually we don't put much on there anyway, because it's mainly for HR to get their, you know, appointments in July approved. So if, if you're okay with that, President Thorpe and the rest of the board?
Yeah, if the board has no questions about that, doing the, use the July be another discussion for this?
Yeah.
All right. Anything else before we close tonight's session? Thank you again for being here and presenting to us, we do appreciate it. With that, we are adjourned, everyone have a good evening.